Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor. Put this in a workshop, so we put out a RFQ for a firm to represent us in the American Rescue Plan Act, not only help us with projects and engineering, but also reporting, pretty much an all-inclusive, helping the city disperse those funds and do it in the correct manner. Also, we've been through quite a bit, thinking we had a plan, and we've come to this, and usually as it works out, I feel like this, in the long run, is probably going to be in the best interest of the city anyway, even if one of those other plans had have worked out. So, we have selected CEC out of Cool Springs. They have worked with the city before, they scored very high. And Jeanette Wolf is here with a pretty short presentation. And any questions you have, just the main thing is, it was going to be on the agenda, and I wanted y'all to have the opportunity to ask questions.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thanks. I'm Ms. Janeet Wolf, so yeah, thank you for allowing me to come and speak today. I just wanted to take a few moments to go through a couple of the slides that we prepared to introduce some background to civil and environmental consultants, and to share some news on the ARPA funding that is available to the city. So, first of all, I'm Jeanette Wolf with CEC. I've been with CEC for 17 years. I'm a water resources engineer in the group, and have worked predominantly in the public sector for my entire career. So, when City of Fairview published the RFQ for the ARPA engineering services, we were very interested and therefore responded to the RFQ with a package. And fortunately, we're invited here tonight. So, I just wanted to give some backgrounds on CEC. We are actually a Pittsburgh headquartered firm, but we have a local office here in Cool Springs in Franklin. We have been in Franklin for 25 years. This is actually our 26th year in the local area. So, we are a local firm and have multi-disciplines in the Franklin area. So, not too far, about 30 minutes here from Fairview. We're an employee-owned company, meaning we don't have an outside board that's deciding things for us. We make actions that are in the best interest of our clients and our employees. And obviously, given that I've been at the firm for 17 years, I really enjoy the firm and the work that we've been able to do. Next slide, please. So, just a brief introduction of CEC as a company. We're a well-established firm. 2022 numbers are up there, $233 million in gross revenue. We're still a growing firm, as is pretty common with engineering firms currently, with the economics the way that they are. And we consistently rank as a top engineering, top design firm in the country. We're multi-disciplined, as I mentioned. We are multi-disciplined locally in Franklin as well. So, we do not anticipate the use of subconsultants for any of these services if we are approved. So, we think that everything can be done in-house and with local expertise, which we think is a benefit to the city, is to have everyone here locally available as resources. Next slide, please. We are committed to safety. So, every project that has a field component to it will have a safety plan included with it. We want to work incident and accident-free. And all of our staff go through annual safety training, so again, that we can work safely in the field and work safely with the city. Wanted to mention a couple of the disciplines that we work in. As I mentioned, we're a multi-disciplined, multi-industry-serving company. You can see on the left on that bottom slide there, that we serve a number of industries across the board, from mining to solid waste. Again, this is public-sector work, as we're working for a municipality. And again, most of my experience has been with the public sector. Mentioned also that we're multi-disciplined in terms of services that we offer, everything from air quality, civil engineering, ecological services, environmental survey, wastewater, water resources. We have it all, and we have it locally as well, which I think is really fortunate, both to me as an engineer and to the city as well, that we have multiple disciplines locally available to us. I'm sorry, this is hard to see, but the top slide shows that we have worked historically with public sector. We serve a number of municipalities here in the middle Tennessee area, as well as over in Knoxville area as well, and starting to branch over into the west Tennessee region of Tennessee. All that to say that we know public sector and we like that work and feel like we can serve the city additionally in this request for qualifications. We do have some background with the City of Fairview that Tom mentioned. So, we have previously served on an on-call engineering services contract, which is still active today, where we've worked with plans review, capital improvement projects, transportation services, environmental surveying. So, that's really been surveying, civil site, environmental. We'll bring in our water resources team if we're approved to work on this ARPA-funded projects. So, a little bit about ARPA. That might be a terminology that you've heard. ARPA was introduced, I believe, in 2021, as we were coming out of the COVID pandemic. So, ARPA stands for American Rescue Plan Act. There was billions of dollars that were allocated to go into cities, municipalities, states. And the focus of ARPA funding was to replace lost public-sector revenue, public health and economic impacts, premium pay. And what I really want to focus on, for the purposes of this RFQ response, was the water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure projects. With any government-funded grants, there is always documentation. This has an annual reporting requirement for the City of Fairview, as they are established as a non-entitlement unit under ARPA funding. So, non-entitlement unit basically is decided based on the population of Fairview. If you were under 50,000 people, you're considered an NEU. Okay, so it's just population-based. And it basically decides how the money was going to get to you. So, as an NEU, the money came to, from the federal government to the state of Tennessee first, and then to the City of Fairview. If you were not a non, if you were other than the NEU, you would have quarterly reporting requirements. The NEUs only have an annual reporting requirement. And that's something that Tom and I have talked about that would be a focus maybe as we get started, was making sure that all the documentation and the annual reporting is up to date in accordance with this grant funding. And the bottom slide there just is a brief organizational chart overview of who at CEC I would anticipate immediately working on this project. I would be the main point of contact for the City of Fairview, and then I would help facilitate the appropriate team at CEC to respond to the various needs of the ARPA funding. With water, sewer, broadband, infrastructure projects, and realistically, we're focusing on water infrastructure projects with this, it could be a variety of team members that we might need, any from grant administration to engineering big documents, to due diligence or construction oversight. We have all of that at CEC, but I would be the main point of contact, and I would be putting the right people at CEC in contact with the city. Next, please. So, the ARPA projects can be delegated into investigation, planning, design, or construction, or all four of these categories. So, anything from investigation could just be initial due diligence work. Planning could be, you know, basically conceptual planning of the projects. Design could be getting the contract-ready documents in place. And then, construction would actually be completion of the projects in the field. Things to be careful of, if we do go to construction with any of these projects per the grant. Do you have to be allowed to do that? I'm loud, so it's okay. Any project that goes to construction, you have to be fully complete by September of 2026, which two years ago didn't sound that bad. And now that we're in the beginning of 2024, that's a pretty aggressive schedule. So, as we kind of walk through that low-hanging fruit types of projects or projects that are a priority to the City of Fairview, we need to be cognizant of that September 2026 absolute must-be-done date with the funding construction-wise projects. Bottom side there, just mentioned CEC's experience with federally funded grants. We are doing a number of services funded through ARPA for multiple cities, both here in the middle Tennessee region and out in west Tennessee. So, here locally, we're working with Pennersville, Gallatin, and City of Franklin, all with ARPA-funded projects, anywhere from grant management to execution of the projects as well, design, development, construction, engineering. We're also working with Mason and Southwood, and as well, Burnell and West Tennessee.
I think we have a new mic for you.
Oh, I have a new mic for you. Sorry. I'm really loud, so it depends on the bottom of the...
The only problem is, we're televised, so our community can watch and listen. So, we just want to make sure they can hear you. Thank you.
Hello? Hello? Is that good?
There you go.
Let's get that where I need to be. Okay. Okay, great. Perfect. Now, I'm back. So, mentioned, we have a lot of ARPA current experience that we're doing right now. We also have other grant experience with USDA rural development grants, community development block grants, and clean water, safe waters, and drinking water, infrastructure fund grants as well. Next, please. Oh, and that's me. So, anyway, that's a very grand overview of CEC and the ARPA-funded work available to the city. Again, my understanding with talking with Tom is you already have the money in place as allocated from the state of Tennessee and the federal government. And it's there, and it's, I was on an earlier slide earlier, I'm sorry. It was, I think, $2.7 million is the City of Fairview's allocation. So, yeah, that's me, and I'm happy to take any questions that y'all might have at this time. And thank you for the time.
Vice Mayor, you have any questions?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. This may be more, and thank you for presenting tonight. This may be more of a staff question. Have we identified specific projects that we anticipate this applying to? Or is that part of the discovery scope with this?
Yes, we have quite a few projects identified, a couple of bridge replacements, multiple culverts. So, we will need to get with CEC and get a plan to get these done. But I believe most of the projects have been identified.
So, that price scope, we hope or anticipate that would be covered in the design review of those. I guess it's just kind of an open commitment, and you bill as services are rendered.
Yeah, our services are time and material-based, so, you know, hours' effort.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much for the presentation.
Thank you. Appreciate it so much.
Item number two, first reading, ordinance 2024-01, and ordinance for an amendment to the City of Fairview, Tennessee, budget for fiscal year 2023-2024, budget, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor. This amended budget is, it constitutes a $533,852 increase in general fund revenue, as well as increase in general fund expenditures. It also constitutes an increased allocation of $140,500 in additional bond funds to be spent. It also allocates $250,000 of additional American Rescue Plan funds to be spent. So, for a total allocation of $924,352. If you look on the first, there's a synopsis page of general fund expenditures. As you see, total personnel, the amendment drops personnel expenses by $182,708. It increases operating expenses by $440,550. Debt service stays neutral, and it increases the capital expenditures, the one-time expenditures, by $276,010. So, out of the, even the $533,852, you subtract $276,10 with one time, so we're increasing operating by around $250,000. So, not a huge change, but we're running through some issues with supply chain. We have the capital, a lot of the capital increases are, we put in an order, but, you know, we don't know exactly when we're going to get the supplies and the equipment. So, it may be next year's budget before they come in, but miracles may happen, and we may be able to spend it this year. So, we're just trying to prepare for if those supply chain things, supply chain challenges come into fruition, and we can purchase the equipment. That is a basic overview. I just basically wanted to give you an opportunity for any questions. I try to be as transparent as possible. Every line item that was changed is highlighted in orange, and everything else stays the same. We did try to adjust as much on our personnel. You know, if a position was not filled, we took that out of the budget. If some positions had not been filled or maybe filled later, we took out, you know, the six months prior that was in the budget. And just, you know, if we can hire them, you know, we tried to look at that and adjust that to real numbers as close as we can.
May I just, I'll just start on the, so on the revenues, quite a few things went up, or most of those based off of what we experienced in the first six months or so, like liquor taxes when beer taxes estimated revenues went up? Are those just based off what we've seen in the first six months?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, most of the, if we adjusted for increased revenue, it's from realized first?
Correct.
Okay.
One final thing I wanted to add. The revenue increased by 5% and the expenditures increased. And you want to keep these pretty close, but increased by 5.53%.
The line item for donations to the park, that was a large number, is that?
That is based on the donation from the historical association of an additional $60,000.
Okay.
Ted, thank you. That's one of the benefits of our City Manager, being a CFMO. First and foremost, before becoming City Manager, you lay out all of this so well and work so hard on it. It, when it comes to us, it's, you know, it's in really good shape. So, I appreciate that.
Well, I think we have chief here tonight to break it down. We had the fleet, I think, increased substantially on that. If you give me any background on that.
You'll notice in your packet, the PD had probably the largest increase in expenditures in the amendment. And I'll give you a little backstory of where we're at and where we plan to go with that. And it sort of spans over this amendment into the next budget. We have seen at a needs assessment that we did that we are really understaffed. We looked externally and internally for data to kind of show where we're at. Detective Reed will give you a handout. We looked at like organizations, and we started seeing that we felt like our patrol division was lacking. We compared that to organizations from 6,000 population to about 12.5, and understood that we were very low as far as based on the population. And then, we looked internally and started to see that although we're staffed at 6, 6, and 5, which is the day shift, afternoon shift, and night shift, that real-world events were happening. We have an officer injured, a shoulder injury out for surgery. We have one that was reassigned due to pregnancy. We have an officer, just his fiancee had a baby this week. We've got two that are going to the academy Sunday. So, that takes that 17 staff and strips it down heavily. We looked back over a 31-day period and found that 24% of the time, we were only running two cars on shift when there's six assigned. And you have events, training, people are taken off vacation, and you should be able to facilitate that. So, we saw that shortage and realized that in the next budget coming up, that staffing was something that we wanted to address, that in that July 1 budget, staffing would be our big ask, I guess you would say. As Tom and I sit down and strategically looked at a plan for that, we realized that the supply chain, used to, you could start the process of hiring someone, and you could completely outfit a vehicle, all the equipment for that person in probably eight to 10 weeks, 12 weeks at best. And that would be the process of posting, interviewing, and hiring someone. You would meet that about the same timeframe. Well, as it stands now, computers, our MDTs, mobile data terminals are 13 to 15 weeks out. Body camera, car camera stuff is 18, 20 weeks out. Car radios are 20, 21 weeks out. We recently purchased those vehicles in the July 1 budget, and we have not recognized them on the road yet. And this is the turn of the new year. So, we took the items that were difficult to get and inserted them in this amendment in an attempt to offset that supply chain, acquire that equipment about the time that we try to move to additional staffing, so that we wouldn't have that lag and just have personnel here with no equipment for them. So, that was the cause for that amendment for us and being so significant this time.
Thank you, sir. Do we add a staff member? Do we add officer?
I've gotten in for one this time, and our goal is, in the next budget, is to add four. And we think that that would shore up our patrol staffing. So, because as we're staffed now, we see it as we're staffed at the bare minimum. Then, we have events, we fall below that. We're looking to staff an overage a little bit so that we function and normal occurrences happen. We have adequate staffing. Because a two-person patrol, you know, on the road tonight, if one happens to get an arrest and goes to Franklin and is out of pocket for several hours processing that arrest, we've got one officer on the road. And that is very dangerous when you go to domestics, people that are mentally unstable. It's one officer. And historically, Williamson County assisted heavily. But their staffing issues, there's many shifts. They don't even put a unit in this zone at all anymore. So, we're understaffed, and we will look to just sort of plan for the future and address those needs.
Would that bring us to like 22? Is that what you're looking at?
The patrol division, well, we're looking at, our goal is, the patrol division is 7, 7, and 7. And there's a little less activity on the midnight shift. So, if we have a loss of staff on those other shifts, we can pull someone down, reassign them to another shift, and it still doesn't handicap the midnight shift that bad. You know, they still can function pretty well. So, it gives us some room to move the staff around if need be. And we think for now, that would be adequate staffing.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I did have a note, one of the amendments was the addition of the crossing guard out there. He has been a pleasant sight to see. He's happy. And I've had several people comment on that, so it's good to have a steady face or a familiar face out there.
Believe Mr. Vice enjoys doing that. I've been through there a few times myself.
One other question, all the unfilled positions right now that we have, are they actively posted or open or pursuing?
I believe all the park positions are full. I'm not sure we are pursuing public works. I believe we're full, except for public works.
There was one note that had the workers' comp budget, I think it almost doubled, like 80% increase, is it?
Yeah, we got that stuff after the budget was put out. I got some, I went off the previous year's budget, and then they threw me a curveball. Luckily, we did have an adjustment on the increase on one of the PEP.
Do we get those quoted annually or every couple of years?
It's annual. It's annual. Let's see. Workers' comp jumped big time. Property went up just a little bit.
That's right.
I was wondering about the plan review services. Is it a goal to maybe in the future have Maria do that for us, or?
Yeah, she's training right now. I'm not sure how many classes. I know she has some material studying. I know you have to take a test. And I think you have to be, it may be, I'm not sure what the timeframe is, but our goal, I've talked with City Planner Ethan Greer, is to hopefully have her doing some of that within a year. So, our goal is to have Maria trained to do residential as well as commercial review. I think that's a little more entailed on the commercial, but that is the plan.
That would be great. I'd love to see us do that in-house. And this has probably already been answered, but I just want to make sure I understand. On the engineering services with, in reference to the ARPA, does that... On the engineering services with, in reference to the ARPA, does that, is that something we pay and then we get reimbursed back to us through the, through the ARPA money?
It'll be paid through ARPA money, yes.
Okay.
I just wanted to add on the reimbursement. There is a matching, I believe, to the grant funding. Is that the way you understand it from the city, a percentage of it?
No, my understanding was we had the money and we had to spend it.
That was it? Okay.
That's my understanding. But I maybe, if I'm off, we'll discuss it.
No, I think if anything, it's a small percentage, but I'll double-check on it. But the majority, if not all, is directly from that grant-funded money from the government.
All of your in-depth analysis made it too easy to dissect, but stuff like cell phones jumped up a huge amount. Do we, do we revisit service provider or things, or is, do we add phones, or?
We are so cheap, much cheaper than we used to be.
Okay.
But I, we've got a meeting with them. This coming week, I believe I can shave about $500 or $600 a month off of that bill.
Nice.
But it's, you know, we've got to get a system where, and it's not just us. It's been passed, I mean, from years back. People that we don't even know who this phone number went with, we're still paying on. So, we're, we're scrubbing that. I mean, and then we're, we're going to get that cleaned up hopefully this week.
Excellent. Thank you.
On the line item that says it's 452 Equipment Operations on Fire Department, 1,000 to 8,000? Just curious.
Yes, this was, Chief had asked me to move, if you look in the, if you look in the capital where they had 8,000 for life packs units,
Mm-hmm.
Where it's a negative 8,000.
I see.
He had asked me to move that to Equipment Operations because he thought that there might be some additional expenditures that I don't think they'll spend that much, but he just wanted, wanted me to move it up. Chief Hughes did say, and I told him I would try not to do this, he said, if we had any questions and we needed to call him, he was more than willing to take a call.
Call him. No, I was just kidding.
That I was incorrect. There is no match for the federally-funded money. There is a match for the Tennessee grant money, which is not what we're talking about. So, there's another pot of money that was coming from out of the state of Tennessee's money, and that did require a match. But you're correct.
Can you help us get some of that money?
That has unfortunately already passed, but otherwise.
Thank you. It was just a large amount, and I just wanted, for the record, to make sure that everybody knew that it was coming out of the ARPA fund.
That's all I have, Mayor.
That's all I have as well. Thank you for your hard work. I know that you've worked really hard on this.
Well, thank you.
To get it prepared. And it's so, like Vice Mayor Butler said, what you give us is laid out so well, it's very easy to see where the money is coming from and going to, and why we need to spend it the way we are. So, I appreciate it.
Well, we're, I just want to give, well, thank you. And I, I just want to give, all the department has put a lot of time and effort in, and they tell me what they need, and they tell me what, you know, we, as we grow, we're trying to, you know, prepare for some of those things, but it's, you know, without going crazy. So, we, we've got a very healthy cash reserve and a very healthy reserve account, and I'm very, I'm very excited about our position moving forward. Thank you.
Well, we have got an exceptional group of people. I know I say that all the time, but the staff we have right now, I, I just want, you know, the city and our community to know that they're the best I've ever worked with, and I've been around for a long time. So, we appreciate all of you. Police, fire, staff, public works, codes, attorneys, you know, everybody. So, all right. I think that's all we have for right now. We will adjourn and pick back up with our Board of Commissioner meeting at 7:00 PM.